Hi, everybody.
Mike.
Um, the call on you. Please do it. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
I'm there.
Here.
Did anybody hear from Brian? I don't, I'm just checking, look for an email from him, but I don't see anything.
No, I haven't heard anything.
No, I have not.
Is Brian the other one missing right now?
Yes.
Okay. Well, 6:45, I guess we should start our study session. We have two committee reports tonight. Sarah and Bridget.
I'm ready.
All set. Okay, are all of our chairs good on the, what they have for the legislative agenda for this evening?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, very good. So, before the legislative agenda this evening, I will be entertaining, entertaining a motion to move into executive session. So, that's on the agenda for everyone to see. So, that will be before the legislative agenda this evening. And second time around, I believe Councilman Minnick will be entertaining a motion to extend the interim appointment of Laura Brandos as the interim senior life director for additional 90 days. Right, Bill?
Correct, Mike.
Okay, very good. Okay, Brian's not here yet.
He is, he just, I just let him in.
Just got here.
Okay. Brian, do you have anything for our roundtable?
I do not.
Okay. Bill?
Other than the CRA meeting and PD meeting, the next two days, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Maureen? Maureen, are you with us?
Nothing, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Sarah?
I don't have anything this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Bridget?
Nothing, thank you.
Greg?
Nothing, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to mention to council before a regular meeting?
I just share with you, and I'll share briefly, you know, at the meeting. You know, we've been in contact with First Energy about the power outages that people have experienced from the storm yesterday. They made some pretty good progress compared to where they were last night. We actually are back service garages out, so we, you know, have talked to them about trying to get that restored. And I know a number of our residents have had some issues as well, so if there are people, there are situations that you think need a little more attention, if you want to reach out to us, or encourage the residents to reach out to us, please do. Both Mary Kay and I have been, again, in contact with representatives of First Energy, you know, and trying to get things moving along. It was quite a storm, and it was still pretty, you know, treacherous last night. I know I was out later in the evening, and so, but, so if there's situations, again, that you know that might need some assistance, please let us know.
Liz, did you have anything to say before we adjourn the study session?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, in 10 minutes, we'll start the regular council meeting then. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Hey, Liz.
Uh huh.
I just forwarded you an email. If tomorrow, you could send that out to all of council.
Okay.
Any suggestions, Liz?
Bill, if you want to in this time we have, you can close out and try the link again.
Yeah, I tried it again when you were on the phone, we're on, in a meeting, and nothing's happening. I don't understand it.
The only other thing I can tell you is maybe restart your computer. Um. If your computer does that fairly fast, that's an option. If it's, well, honestly, you're on the phone, so you could, you could do it regardless. So, that's the only other recommendation I have. Other, I, I can't see what's going on, so.
Was he having a problem with the link, Liz?
Yes.
I had problems with the, with the email that had both of them in it, because the one wasn't hyperlink. For whatever reason, the one for this one. So, Bill, maybe I'll, I'll send you just a link from my web browser, maybe that will work for you.
All right, thanks. Fantastic, Brian.
That worked?
Did that work, Bill?
As soon as you let me in, I'll be in.
Nice.
Okay, hang up the phone. The phone's still on, because it's giving feedback.
Oh, good.
Now, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Good. Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, no problem.
Fairview Park Ward 5, wow.
That's right. Getting all fancy. Showing us all up. Okay.
Ooh, gotta let some more people in. Admin, admin, admin.
All right, everyone, it's 7 o'clock. Regular meeting of the, of the council of the city of Fairview Park from Monday, November 16, 2020. It's now called the order. The clerk, please call and roll.
Mr. Summerly.
Here.
Mr. Minnick.
Here.
Mrs. Adler.
Here.
Mr. Kilbane.
There.
Mrs. Waring.
Here.
Mrs. King.
Here.
Mr. Berger.
Present.
We will have this evening's committee reports with local government and community service, Councilwoman Waring.
Thank you, Council President Kilbane. The Local Government and Community Services Committee met on November 9, beginning at 7:01 PM via teleconference. In attendance were members of council and Mayor Cooney. The committee discussed Ordinance 2045, which approves the editing and inclusion of recently passed ordinances into the codified ordinances of Fairview Park. This includes not only the ordinances that are passed by the city council, but also ordinances passed by the state legislation, which may affect us here in our city. It was confirmed that the proposed update to the codified, codified ordinances will include the charter amendments that were made in November of 2019. Council Clerk Westbrook's had asked city departments for an understanding as to whether they wanted paper copies of the updates, or if they are using electronic versions, and Mayor Cooney pledged to assist her in receiving those answers. The ordinance was placed on second read and returned to committee by a vote of seven to zero. The committee discussed Resolution 2017, which establishes a city diversity and inclusion coalition. The chair made the recommendation that two amendments be made to the legislation, including a whereas clause in the name of the task force. Council debated the merits of such, and as well as the information that should be gleaned from an application form. The committee will further discuss the application form during its next committee meeting. The resolution was placed on second read and returned to committee by a vote of seven to zero. The Local Government and Community Services Committee ended at 7:28 PM. This concludes my report. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waring. Okay, well, now I have the Finance Committee report. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. The Finance Committee met via conference on Monday, November 9, at 7:28 PM. In attendance were members of council, Mayor Cooney, Director Costello, Chief Raffin, and members of the community. Ordinance 2043, placing fire levy renewal on the May 2021 ballot, and Resolution 2016, requesting county to certify fire levy renewal 2021 through 2025. Chief Raffin was in attendance and explained the need for the renewal and the steps that the fire department will take to campaign for it. All questions were answered, and then a motion was made to place this ordinance on third read and final passage, and it passed with a vote of seven to zero. A motion was made to keep the, keep Resolution 2016 in committee until the proper certificate is received from the county on Ordinance 2043, after which, this resolution will be moved from committee and into third read and final passage. And that passed with a vote of seven to zero. Ordinance 2046, the 2021 County Board of Health contract. A brief discussion was had around the Board of Health and its, and the important work that it does, especially this year with the pandemic. A motion was made to have this ordinance on second and subsequent third read, and it passed with a vote of seven to zero. The Finance Committee concluded at 7:42 PM. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman King. Okay, the chair will now entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject to pending or imminent court action and matters required to be kept confidential by federal laws or rules or state statutes.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing number of clerk, please call, roll on the motion to move into executive session.
Mr. Summerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries council is now in executive session. The clerk has sent everybody the link that they need to go to, to get into executive session, into the discussion. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
We all make it back?
A couple more people have to get here. Mayor's coming in. Greg and Maureen.
Hey Liz, Greg just texted said he was removed by the host. Just have him try the link again.
Yeah, he can click on the link again, I believe. Maureen just sent me a message saying the same thing. I... Going to send it to them. Amy Als again.
Hey Greg. Yeah, Liz is trying to get you in right now.
I just sent him another invite to get back in, him and Maureen.
Said she just sent you another link for you and Maureen. Yeah, she said she just sent you another link. Just give it a shot. Okay, thanks. He's trying it.
Okay, here's Maureen. She's calling in. Brian, can you tell Greg he may have to call in?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Hey Liz?
Yes, hi, Maureen.
Hi, yeah, there was something where it was saying I couldn't get in. Here, I'll try. Should I try this link again?
Ryan has sent you the...
I'll try it again.
Ryan has sent you the link.
Okay, I just tried. I'll try it.
No, I sent it to my... Councilman Minnick.
Okay, I'll hang up. I think I'm good.
Okay.
Right?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
They just sent Greg a text saying to try and call in.
Yeah, I just did the same. I sent him another link too. I don't know if it makes a difference, but...
All right.
Greg, get in.
I don't see him yet.
Well, while there's six of us here, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn executive session.
So moved.
So moved second.
Please call the role on the motion to adjourn executive session.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Abber.
Yes.
Mr. Cobain.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Motion carries. Executive session is adjourned. We'll give Greg a couple more minutes to see if we can get him in and we'll start our legislative agenda. You know what? Why don't we just go ahead and start the legislative agenda?
I think this is him calling in.
Can you hear me?
4402310900, is that you Greg?
Uh, yeah. Okay, I've never done this by phone, so shall be interesting.
All right, Greg, we adjourned executive session and we're going to begin the legislative agenda now.
Okay.
Okay, so legislation for first read, Councilman Minnick.
Thank you, Council President. I have two ordinances for first read.
Will the clerk please assign numbers and read the titles?
Ordinance 2048, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilman Minnick, co-sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance authorizing McKay Engineering and Surveying Company to prepare plans and specifications and provide construction administration and procurement services for the relocation and reconstruction of a restroom at Bain Park and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2049, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilman Minnick, co-sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance authorizing McKay Engineering and Surveying Company to prepare plans and specifications and provide construction administration and bidding services for water main replacements and pavement resurfacing on Cromwell Avenue, Parkwood Avenue, and Bain Park Drive and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ordinances 2048 and 2049 were both placed on first reading and assigned to the Environment, Public Works Planning, Zoning Development Committee. Councilwoman Waring.
Thank you, Council President. I have one ordinance I'd like to place up for first reading.
Will the clerk please assign a number and read the title?
Ordinance 2050, requested by Mayor Patrick Cooney, sponsored by Councilwoman Waring. An ordinance setting the membership user fee schedule for the Fairview Park Recreation and Community Center, Gemini Center for the year 2021 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ordinance 2050 is placed on first reading and assigned to the Local Government and Community Services Committee. Excuse me. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. I have five ordinances and one resolution up for first reading.
Here with the clerk, please assign numbers and read the titles.
Ordinance 2051, requested by Greg Single, Finance Director, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance appropriating funds for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairview Park, Ohio, for the period commencing January 1st, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2020, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2052. Originated by Greg Single, Finance Director, requested by Mayor Patrick Cooney, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance appropriating funds for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairview Park for the period commencing January 1st, 2021, and ending March 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2053, requested by Mayor Patrick Cooney, sponsored by Councilwoman King, co-sponsored by Councilwoman Waring. An ordinance amending Section 143.23B, entitled Vacation Leave of Chapter 143, entitled Employment Provisions of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Fairview Park and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2054, requested by Mayor Patrick Cooney, sponsored by Councilwoman King, co-sponsored by Councilwoman Waring. An ordinance amending Section 143.30, entitled Payment Upon Separation of Chapter 143, entitled Employment Provisions of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Fairview Park and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2055, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Brewer Garrett Company to provide preventative maintenance services for the pool pack rooftop mechanical units and associated equipment servicing the Gemini Center Leisure Pool and declaring an emergency. Resolution 2018, requested by Greg Single, Finance Director, sponsored by Councilwoman King. A resolution requesting the county fiscal officer to advance taxes from the proceeds of tax levies pursuant to Section 321.34 of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Clerk Westbrook. Okay, ordinance 2051, ordinance 2052, ordinance 2053, ordinance 2054, ordinance 2055, and resolution 2018. Were all placed on first reading and assigned to the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now have legislation for second reading. Councilwoman Waring.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to place ordinance 2045 and resolution 2017 up for second reading.
Will the clerk please read the titles?
Ordinance 2045, requested by Council... President Kilbane, sponsored by Councilwoman Waring. An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of the city of Fairview Park, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Resolution 2017, requested by Council President Kilbane, sponsored by Council President Kilbane, Councilwoman Waring, Councilwoman King, and Councilman Minnick. I'm sorry, I do not have that blurb in front of me. Hold on. Oh, you get to witness my computer. A resolution establishing the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Coalition, its purpose and appointment of members.
All right, thank you. Ordinance 2045 is placed on second reading, second and subsequent third reading. Resolution 2017, placed on second reading and returned to Local Government and Community Services Committee. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to place ordinance 2046 up for second reading.
Will the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 2046, requested by Mayor Patrick Cooney, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health for health services for the year 2021 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ordinance 2046 is placed on second and subsequent third reading. Clerk Westbrook, have we received any requests? And to speak and... For audience input and legislation that is up for passage this evening?
I have not received any, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will now have legislation for passage without pre-readings. All right, the Chair places a... A resolution before Council for first reading.
Emergency passage, please.
Emergency passage. Will the clerk please read the title and assign a number?
Resolution 2019, requested and sponsored by Council President Kilbane. A resolution in support of Senate Bill 365 and to urge Governor DeWine and the State Legislature of Ohio to extend the deadline for operating public meetings electronically and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Let's see. Chair, let's see. I have a... An ordinance to be placed for Council... I'm sorry, I moved that to Charter provision in Rule 49 requiring that the ordinance be read at three separate meetings, be suspended, and that be placed before Council for emergency passage.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Hearing number, clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
The motion carries. Now move that Rule 53 requiring reference to committee be dispensed with and that the resolution be placed for final passage.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing number clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Motion carries, prior to call for passage of resolution 2019, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing number clerk, please call roll on passage of resolution 2019.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Resolution 2019 passes, Councilman Minnick.
Thank you Council President, I have an ordinance to be placed before council for emergency passage.
Will the clerk please assign a number and read the title?
Ordinance 2056, requested by Mayor Patrick Cooney, sponsored by Councilman Minnick. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to engage the law firm of Montessor Gavin LPA as special counsel for advice on issues concerning the proposed rezoning of permanent parcel number 321-29-027 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Councilman Minnick.
Thank you Council President, I move the charter provision and Rule 49 requiring the ordinance be read at three separate, be suspended, and then be placed before council for emergency passage.
So moved, do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing number clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Motion carries, Councilman Minnick.
Thank you Council President, I move that Rule 53 requiring reference to committee be dispensed with and the ordinance be placed for emergency passage.
So moved, do we have any discussion?
Is that a second from the dog?
Yeah, a second and a third, yeah. Hearing number clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
All right, the motion carries, prior to call for passage of ordinance 2056, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing number clerk, please call roll, passage of ordinance 2056.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
The ordinance 2056 passes. Okay, we will now have legislation for third reading and final passage, Councilwoman King.
Thank you Council President, I would like to place ordinance 2041 up for third read and final passage.
Okay, will the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 2041, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King, co-sponsored by Councilman Minnick. An ordinance supporting an application to Cuyahoga County for the 2020 Municipal Grant Program to provide financial assistance for the 2021 Sidewalk Safety Improvement Project and authorizing the mayor to accept any awarded grant funds and file all documents and execute all agreements necessary to receive any awarded grant funds and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Prior to call for passage of ordinance 2041, is there any discussion? Hearing number clerk, please call roll on passage of ordinance 2041.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Ordinance 2041 passes, Councilwoman King.
Thank you Council President, I would like to place ordinance 2042 up for third read and final passage.
Will please read the title?
Ordinance 2042, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King, co-sponsored by Councilman Minnick. An ordinance supporting and authorizing the submission of an application to the Cuyahoga County Department of Development for the 2021 Community Development Supplemental Grant Program to provide financial assistance for improvements to Balkan Park and authorizing the mayor to accept any awarded grant funds and file all documents and execute all agreements necessary to receive any awarded grant funds and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Prior to call for passage of ordinance 2042, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing number clerk, please call roll on passage of ordinance 2042.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
The ordinance 2042 passes, Councilwoman King.
Thank you Council President, I would like to place ordinance 2043 up for third read and final passage.
Will the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 2043, requested by Mayor Patrick Cooney, sponsored by Councilwoman King and Waring. An ordinance requesting that the Cuyahoga County Fiscal Officer certify certain information to the city of Fairview Park relative to the renewal of the 1 mil fire tax levy, providing for a renewal of a tax for the benefit of the city of Fairview Park for the purpose of providing and maintaining fire apparatus, buildings, payment of firefighters' salaries, employer's contribution required under Section 742.34 of the Ohio Revised Code, purchasing ambulance equipment for providing ambulance, paramedic, or other emergency medical services at a rate not exceeding 1 mil for each $1 evaluation, which amounts to 10 cents for each $100 evaluation for five years commencing in 2021, first due in calendar year 2022, to be placed on the May 4th, 2021 ballot and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Prior to call for passage of ordinance 2043, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing number clerk, please call roll, passage of ordinance 2043.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Ordinance 2043 passes. This will conclude our legislative agenda for this evening. We will now have reports and communications from the mayor and his directors. Mayor Cooney, if you're ready.
Thank you Council President Kilbane, good evening everybody. Wanted to let people know that the programming is going well in person and virtually at the Senior Center. If people are interested in joining the program, live programs or virtual programming, please contact the Senior Center. Our new licensed social worker Sandy Melos is available to help seniors with Medicare open enrollment. So if you know somebody who has questions regarding that, please contact Sandy at the Senior Center. The Gemini Center will be closed on Thanksgiving Day. I'm not sure that's going to conflict with anybody's plans, but hopefully it won't. We've been having our member visits there have been pretty steady. We did see a drop off a couple of weeks ago when the weather was, you know, picture perfect for June, let alone November. But beyond that, our visits have been pretty steady. Due to the increase in the COVID cases, we are temporarily suspending any rentals of Bain Cabin and the Gemini Center through November and December. If people are interested in making reservations for 2021, they should contact the Recreation Department starting November 23rd. We have virtual visits with Santa, unfortunately we had a cancel Winter Fest this year. And, but we do have virtual visits for Santa. If people are interested in scheduling that, they can go to the website. Also, at the website, they can find additional information on the Light Up Neighborhoods contest. I'd like to thank the staff at the Recreation Department for these ideas. Obviously, a lot of things are different this year and I appreciate their, you know, creative ideas and trying to, you know, make things as normal as they can under the circumstances, but also too with respect with the Light Up the Neighborhood contest, they have some community camaraderie. You know, we had a big storm yesterday. Fortunately, we didn't have any injuries. The fire, I'm sorry, the police department received 24 storm-related calls. There were some wires and trees down. There was, I know, at least one road closure at 2:21 in the rain. There was obviously some property damage, but again, fortunately, nobody was injured. I'd like to thank Supervisor Bradgum and Ryan Ruffner and Chris Laska from the Service Department for coming in yesterday on short notice to attend to some of the problems that we had here in the city. We have been in touch, Director Costello and myself have been in touch with representatives of First Energy regarding the outages that people are experiencing. They've made progress, I know throughout the region, and this was obviously a region-wide outages. But they've made a lot of progress in restoring power in the region and certainly here in Fairview Park. Our service garage, our back service garage is without power. We've talked to them about that, but also about some of our residents that need power restored, you know, trying to get an update. I know they're working 16-hour shifts. They've brought in crews from other regions and they've contracted with third-party contractors to assist them in getting everybody back online. If you know someone who is having, experiencing some difficulties or having some difficulties in getting contact with First Energy, please contact myself or Director Costello and we'll reach out to First Energy. Our leaf pickup continues. And I would like to reiterate something that Councilmember Waring mentioned at one of our last meetings regarding people, their leaf piles. You know, please keep them on your tree lawn. Leaf piles in the street are a danger to people driving. You know, it gets slick. You know, the leaves are more prone to get into the sewers, which causes sewer problems. And it makes it, and it makes it more difficult for our service department to pick up the leaves. Your tree lawns are resilient, they will be back in full bloom in the spring. So if their leaves are on there for a few days, they will come back. But, you know, the service department has been working hard in getting to this and, you know, we had a little setback of, you know, with some of the things that they had to address after the storm yesterday. But for the most part, they're out there every day getting, picking up the leaves. And which, you know, you can use the leaf tracker on our website to see where they're at to get a sense of if you need to get out and break your leaves. If you have, if you're not able to do that, you can call here at City Hall and we'll give you an update. And that concludes my report, thank you Council President Kilbane.
Thank you Mayor Cooney. Director of Public Service and Development Costello.
Thank you Council President, I'll be sending a border control agenda in this week, hopefully tomorrow. And I just wanted to also say thank you for passage and consideration of our ordinances regarding the grants. Thank you very much, that concludes my report.
Thank you Director. Finance Director Single.
Let me make sure he's not, he is muted, hold on one second. Greg? Greg, click and ask to unmute, you might have to push the button to unmute it.
Okay. Law Director Riley, do you have a report for us tonight?
No, I do not, thank you Council President.
Thank you Director. City Engineer Kerber.
Council President, I have a short report tonight. We've made the Summittles ODOT for West 10th Street for the Stage 3. So we will wait getting their comments back so we can finalize the plans, that's all, thank you.
Thank you Engineer. Is Director Single, was he able to get through?
No, I'm trying to email him to ask him to unmute himself.
I know he had an exciting report for us this evening. Well. Clerk Westbrook, have we received any requests to speak during public session? Or do we have any emails that have been requested to be read at the minutes this evening?
No, I have not.
Okay. Okay, then we will have comments and miscellaneous business by members of City Council. Councilman Semerly.
Thanks, real quick, on November 26th, Thanksgiving, Coffinberry will have their annual turkey trot. So that will start and end near the corner of Coffinberry and Henry Road. All are welcome and social distancing will be required. The only entry fee is a canned food item, which will go to Meals on Wheels and the Fairview Park Pantry. And that's all I have tonight.
Great, thank you. Councilman Minnick.
Thank you Council President. The Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council will meet tomorrow, 7 o'clock via Zoom in the Dunson Room, and also virtual. And of course, on Wednesday, the Planning Design Commission meeting will meet at 7 o'clock. There's only one docket item, which is the mandatory referral of ordinance 20-38 for reported recommendation pursuant to Article 7, Section 2D of the city charter. And I'm happy to at this time to move to extend Laura Brondo's interim appointment as Director of Senior Life for an additional 90 days.
So moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing number clerk, please call the role, call roll on the motion to reappoint.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Burger.
Yes.
All right, the motion carries, and the interim appointment of Laura Brando is extended for an additional ninety days. Anything else, Councilman Minnick?
Thank you, please try to report, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Adler.
I mean, I just had an inquiry for either the mayor or Director Costello. I know you mentioned First Energy, you know, is working very hard with regard to restoring power to many people's homes. I did get one resident on Spencer Lane, Sandy Lavelle, who, um, contacted me because she said the loss of power to her home is something that happens frequently. And, um, to the point where she said she might move, you know, and she said it'll affect Spencer Lane and no one else. Have you heard this before?
It is the first I've heard of it. Now, but I will, um, look up her address and report that to our contact at First Energy and ask them if they could make a, an investigation to see if there are other outages being reported. And one piece of advice to any resident that if you could pass along to your constituents is to call the one eight 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 lights with two S's at the end and report even brief outages. It helps First Energy, ascertain what is going on and, and helps them prioritize how they address these outages. So even if you come home from work and you've got digital clocks flashing, still call it in, even though power has been restored, because they need to see from our constituents what the outages are when they're happening in, in a general, uh, in, in a general way. So I appreciate the question. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll make a point to share that information with Miss Lavelle, and, um, I can follow up with you tomorrow as well, more specifically.
That would be great. Thank you.
That could, that could also be done on the website as well.
Okay.
In addition to, to, uh, a phone call.
Okay, and I also did just want to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of a longtime resident, John Donlin. John was always, you know, a vocal person in our city, um, and in Ward Three specifically, you know, and he also frequented our meetings.
Any, um, any question?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, Maureen, I didn't realize that was on. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted to acknowledge, um, John Donlin's passing. He, he was someone that when we did live meetings, he and his wife Kathy would pop in frequently and always, um, were trying to do what they could to make sure Fairview remained a great place to live. John, you know, was a very passionate person about the issues he believed in. And just to make people aware, you know, his passing was, for a sixty-two-year-old man, you know, unexpected and, uh, you know, the sympathies of both myself and I think all of City Council in the city goes out to Kathy Connor and Owen on his.
Thanks, Councilwoman Adler. I, I'm very sorry to hear the passage of Mr. Donlin. I had no idea.
Yeah, it was, and then, and then lastly, with this storm yesterday, I want to pass along compliments to our city. I don't know, on, uh, at forty-five ninety Concord, a large tree came down and crushed the back of, um, a resident's home. Uh, it was their master bedroom. Their daughter was sleeping in one room over. It happened in the middle of the day. Fortunately, the child was left unharmed. Uh, the incident happened during the day, so the parents weren't sleeping. And they just praised the response of the city and their neighbors, most importantly, during this, uh, terrible incident that occurred. So, good, good job on the part of Fairview Park and its residents to keeping these, these people just moved from California about five months ago into Fairview Park, and they were quite happy with the way everybody rallied around them during this tragic incident. And that concludes my, uh, report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Waring.
Thank you, Council President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Councilman Burger.
Okay, am I unmuted now? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Uh, so as, uh, Councilman Minnick said, we have the, uh, CRA that's meeting, um, tomorrow at seven PM in the Dunson Room and by Zoom. Uh, CRA does a, an annual review of, uh, properties in the city that have, uh, tax abatements on them. And then the only other thing I have is that on Wednesday, uh, this week, I'm having a meeting with, uh, Kevin Kennedy, the mayor of North Olmsted, and he is going to show me and give me some information on their equalization basins for their stormwater control that they've used in North Olmsted. Uh, he has reported that these have been effective in the areas that, um, they've put them in. And so hopefully I'll get some information that I'll be able to forward on and, uh, email to everybody else. Um, you know, as we await the flows, uh, study coming in, uh, at the end of the year. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. So, sorry, Mr. President. Sorry to interrupt. I have Director Single in here. If, uh, I know you've been waiting for his report, so he had a little, some technical difficulty.
Fated breath. Hello, all. So I kept hitting star six. I think I wore the buttons on, on the phone and it wasn't unmuting for me. But thanks for allowing me to speak real quick. The, uh, if the council has any questions on the two appropriation ordinances, will be on the agenda next week, next week's committee meeting. Please let me know, and that's all I have for you. Thanks. Hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you, Director Single.
And Council President, I just wanted to, I meant to mention this earlier. I know, uh, with the Zoom meeting for planning and design, that is, has not been posted because they've, uh, had some problems with, uh, uh, their meetings being bombed. So that information will be posted on the city website, uh, I believe tomorrow, and we will share that with all of you, and then they can, and as well on our social media sites.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, in closing, I just want to say that I hope our residents are, uh, are you, are you finished, Mayor?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Sorry for that interruption.
Oh, no, no, that's okay. I just want to say that I hope our residents are staying safe and, and their families are staying safe and well during this, the, uh, the spike in this pandemic again. I know it's been a long road to Ho and, uh, but, and you know, I think, uh, there's some light coming at the end, at the end of this tunnel soon, and, uh, just, uh, want to say, stay vigilant and, you know, take care of yourselves and take care of each other. And, uh, if nothing else, the chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, move.
Second.
The clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yep.
Mr. Burger.
Yes.
The motion carries. Council is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Night.